Good morning, everyone. Welcome to council. Call the meeting to order. Can I? You've all have your agenda in front of you. Can I get approval of the agenda? Counsel Donovan?
Would like to make one addition to the agenda for a session in camera after the meeting to discuss personnel issue. Yes. Okay.
So we have a new addition to the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So.
By Counselor Matheson LaFort, second. Counselor Kerr, all in favor? Motion carried. Can I get approval of the June 16, 2025 council minutes? It's moved by Counselor Donovan, second. Counselor Bourne, all in favor? Motion carried. Can I get approval of the June 19, 2025 special council minutes? Moved by Counsel Hennig. Second by Counselor Donovan, all in favor? Motion carried. Okay, first thing up is CBU ask. Leanne's going to speak on this?
Yeah. So just a reminder, at last month's council session, President Dingwall came to council, had an ask for for CBU for $5 per resident, which was an ask of $35,000 from council. That was not in the council budget. That was passed, but I think it was said that it would be discussed and a decision would be made. I'm expecting that he'll be looking for something to be coming back, looking for a status on that, so I'm just opening that up. See if anyone would like to discuss that ask.
Counsel Bourne? Thank you. I did take some notes on this. So first, I would like to acknowledge the positive impact that the university has on our community and the region. The work contributes significantly to education, innovation, and economic development. And I believe it's important for us to continue fostering strong relationships with the institutions like CBU. That said, the timing of the request does present some challenges. It was submitted after we finalized our budget and they have not pursued external grant opportunities, meaning they didn't apply for one of our grants when the grant application was open as well. Given the full request was 35,000, I'd like to propose maybe a small compromise that would reflect both our support and our current financial limitations and only if this would be available funds. And Leanne can speak to this. That we approve 15,000 this year and revisit the remaining 20 next year as part of our budget discussions.
I second that. And I just, if my memory serves me correctly, President Dingwall did say it could be spread over a number of years.
Okay, so that wasn't a motion yet? That was just a discussion? So I guess, are you proposing that that comes out of council initiatives? Would that be the line item that that would come out of?
Are you saying the district budgets or you say?
No, there was, there's another line in there for council special projects.
Okay.
I think it's $100,000.
Right, and I do know there's, like, council did bring other projects forward that we're looking at potentially in the future. So I just, that's why I wanted to bring it back to you to know if this is something that we could manage and if not, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, so I'm uncertain right now of the balance in that account, if that is where it would go. So we can look into that if that is council's wishes.
So you're proposing how much? Fifteen?
Um, yeah, I would, I just suggested 15. But again, that's just for discussion. That's not something that I'm stuck with. I just wanted to throw it on the table for a discussion.
Because I was, sorry, because I was now in the meeting. I watched the council, but the proposal for him is for one year or just for this year or?
His ask, he said it could be spread over two to three years, I think.
Yeah, just I say it's very important that. It's very important for the island, the university. Our kids go there or could go there and, yeah.
Counsel Matheson LaFort?
Did he say specifically what they were planning? What, why they needed the money, other than we want money? I can't remember. Just because the last time I checked, these aren't tuition-free universities, right? No. And it's not cheap to go to university. So I'm just curious as to where the money's actually going. Because it's a very small amount of money, considering the annual revenue of these places, so. I'm just curious. I'd like to know why, where it's going and why.
I know he was talking mostly about the medical.
Or assume that was brought up because he knew that would be a seller for us since we have a close to emergency, so.
Counsel Donovan?
If memory serves, I think when he was here, the funding was to expand their medical, medical studies at the university. But I seem to recall him also saying that with that, there was going to be a commitment made by the students. I don't remember if it was three or five years. Five years, yeah, five years. So a five-year commitment by the students to work in rural areas, which is a great idea.
That's locked in, though. That was all a proposal, correct?
But, but like you said, is 35,000 is a small amount.
My, my issue is that 35,000 is a very small amount of money to fund anything at a university, but it's a very big chunk of change for a small county and what we could do with 35,000 in other areas. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
But I'm also very anyway, thank you. That.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, it's, uh, but what I see was she's asking for, uh, the amount came from, because with $7,000, seven people around in the island. So I think he's asking for every county, different amounts. So that was just demographic for the amount he's asking.
Yeah, he was asking for $5 per resident of Cape Breton.
It is, but as he knows that we are rural and we don't have too much budget, right? But I think it's important to be in, supporting our only birds who can die in.
Well, can we find out how much money is in that fund?
Special projects fund?
Before we make any decision?
Yep, we'll bring that back. How about we'll take that as an action item? And if that's council's wish, so there's no motion on that yet, so.
Yeah, we need, we need a motion. Does anybody have a motion?
I made.
Deputy Morton?
Yep, I made the motion to bring to, to, we're going to do the 35 if we have the money.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it now. At the right time.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Patterson. We have a motion on the table, all in favor? Yes, motion carried. Uh, next, the Cape Breton Partnership Investor Summit sponsorship.
So I received a request from Cape Breton Partnership. So it says, "Good morning, Leanne. I wanted to personally reach out as we begin preparations for this year's annual investor summit taking place on October 23, 2025, at the Inverary Resort on Bedeck Bay. The summit continues to grow as one of Unamagi, Cape Breton's premier gatherings, bringing together more than 200 businesses and community leaders from across the island." And I believe that was the first event that council got together at in last year. Uh, "One of the most anticipated parts of the summit actually begins the evening before the pre-event on October 22. The amoeba tours, winster, social cruise, and dinner, which this year will be hosted at the Fraychhead Restaurant. The signature experience is an exclusive highlight for our guests and it sets the tone for the summit. We'd be thrilled to see Victoria County once again step in as the social cruise sponsor. Your past sponsors, your past support of this event has played a big role in making it a standout experience. It is today and it's a great opportunity to continue showcasing the best of the region and your leadership in it, attached as the exclusive sponsorship package." So there's, uh, there's several, there's some complimentary tickets to the investor summit and to the cruise and the Victoria County logo and links on website and cards, et cetera. The ask on this is $3,250, which I believe is around the same amount that it was last year and in prior years. So that is an ask from the partnership for council to consider. They also do have another complete sponsorship package, which I think was sent out to council in your council package with several other funding opportunities, if that is not something that council is interested in. So I'm opening that up to you to see if that is, if any of that is something the council would like to consider.
Anyone have any questions or?
Counsel. Did we sponsor last year and if so, what level?
Yeah, we sponsored the cruise. Yes.
And Leanne, this money, is this coming from special projects too? Or do we have that in a different place?
Have it in a different place. It's probably coming from the same council initiatives.
Okay.
I would expect that's built into, um, into the budget. There is a sponsorships line for things, for asks that happen because we do want to promote events and.
Our county.
Within the county. Uh, because the more that comes here to host, it's a good opportunity to show off the whole county. People can come back afterwards. They spend their money while they're here. So it is something good to have, have built into the budget as well to showcase the county.
Okay, you all, Counsel Kerr?
As a first-time counselor, last year I found it very beneficial because there was many contacts that were made there that we normally would not have found. You know, so I, I personally, I would be in favor of supporting.
Of that amount?
CAO is.
Do you want to put a motion for?
I'll make the motion that we support it to the same as what we did last year.
The sponsor the cruise?
Yes.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second, Counselor Matheson LaFort? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, yes, motion is carried. Teresa. We're going to go into district highlights and we'll start with Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Just want to report that we had a very successful Canada Day event in, uh, at the Rossberry Marine Park. It was our biggest crowd ever, I think. They count, I don't know how accurate the count is. They counted about 860 people, but I would round that up to 1,000. I mean, there's probably some people that snuck in that they didn't get to count with. The weather was beautiful. For the last two years, we've been teamed up with Kitchen Fest and they do the promotion of the entertainment. And I think they pay part, if not all, of the entertainers that we have. This year, we had a local musician, Daryl Kagan, who was very popular with the crowd. And it was just a great day out in beautiful weather, as I said. And I'd just like to thank, going back to the beginning of the Marine Park, at this very table, it got its first, I guess, breath or whatever, when council at that time approved a fund of, a sum of money to the municipality's share of setting up the Marine Park. So it's become a focal part of the community. Every Sunday, they have events going on and serving french fries and hot dogs and so on. You don't tell them that too many people what's on the menu. But anyway, it's really become a focal part of the community. I live fairly close to it, so I usually take a drive down once or twice a day and there's people swimming or fishing or boating or whatever. And it's a real access point to the lake. So let's just congratulate the community and the stewardship society who manages it. And hopefully we'll have success in the future.
Counsel Patterson, Counsel Bourne?
Thank you, Warden. I've recently heard from residents and a local business on a few issues. A business had concerns about garbage pickup and I clarified the policy and procedures in place. And a shout out to Counselor Matheson LaFort as I messaged her and we found the information real quick. So thank you so much for that. A resident raised concerns about brush along the roadway and the North Shore to Red Cove. I've connected, contacted the public works and they're working on a solution. There was also some reports of potholes and sinkholes along Bedeck Bay Road and through St. Ange, which has been passed along to the appropriate department as well for follow-up. And then just some updates. Bedeck Academy graduation on June 27. I had the honor of attending the Bedeck Academy 2025 graduation ceremony with Counselor Carr. It was a proud day for students, families, and staff, and I was pleased to help present awards on behalf of the municipality. And then just another shout out and congratulations to all the grads across Victoria County. Kitchen Fest was June 27 to July 5. Kitchen Fest once again brought the Gaelic music, language, and tradition to life across the region. It was very successful and it was great to see so many visitors and locals attend these events. Canada Day Parade, which was July 1 in Bedeck, I joined fellow Counselor Carr, Deputy Warden McLeod, and our MLA Diane Timmins for the Canada Day Parade. And again, it was great to see so many residents out and so many residents from District 4. The Gaelic College fundraiser I attended on July 2, which was a traditional cod dinner. It was delicious. So I just wanted to share that. It was another great fundraiser to help support the college. And on July 5, I attended the 65th wedding anniversary of John and Joanne McDonald in Englishtown. It was a lovely event and well-attended by the community and from family far and close. Just a couple of upcoming events. Weekly Cailes will still continue at the Gaelic College on Wednesday evenings and Traditional Cailes will also take place at the St. Anne's Bay United Church on Tuesdays and Fridays. Englishtown pub nights are back through the summer at the Englishtown Community Hall and that will, the next one is July the 9. And then finally, I just want to discuss quickly about the temporary washroom support program. I kind of just came up with that name, so I'm not too sure if that would be the official title, but it was just easy for me to remember. During our budget deliberations, council agreed to include funding to help address the ongoing need for additional temporary washrooms during tourist season. Now that the funds are in place, I'm bringing this motion forward to request that staff create a way to, for local businesses to apply for that support. We had previously discussed a cost-sharing model. While I'm not instructing how that is, it's to be implemented, I hope that approach may be considered again. So I do have a motion. I move that council direct municipal staff to develop and implement a process for local businesses to apply for funding under the temporary washroom program line included in this year's budget. This process could include a cost-sharing approach as discussed in my previous motion and should aim to be available as soon as possible, ideally in July, to support rural businesses during the peak tourist season.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second or? Second by Counsel Kerr. All in favor?
I just question.
Oh, sorry. Yes, discussion.
So you want in this program, we give money to the business or just the business to have our washrooms?
So that would be up for, that would be up for staff to, to determine with, with our CAO to come up with the program. But we did put that funding in a, in a line in the budget. So that's what it's there for and it would be directed back to the CAO to come up with that program.
I think this is extra funding on top of washroom funding that we already have built in. This is for areas that don't have one of our washrooms.
Thanks for clarifying.
Another discussion? So we have a motion on the table. We have a second here, all in favor? Against? Motion carried. Counselor? Okay, Counsel Donovan?
Thank you, Warden. Uh, right off, I guess, first thing, uh, I did have a discussion with a couple of local business owners in Inghamish and they have questions about garbage pickup. Uh, one of the problems that they're, that they're experiencing is that because people drive through and they have their garbage containers there, they're dropping their garbage in their garbage containers and the local businesses are the ones that are feeling the brunt of it. I don't know if there's a way that the additional garbage can be picked up from them because right now I believe it's bore bags. Uh, anyway, that was, that was one of the questions I got from them. And basically, like I said, because all of the garbage in their garbage box is not their garbage.
Yeah, so we've been hearing that for several years. It's a problem not only here, it happens everywhere. Same thing like when you go to a garage and when you cross the causeway, let's say you drop all your garbage at the Irving or whatever gas station that you stop at. If you have the garbage cans out, then you're opening it up for that reason. Again, it gets you to stop, gets you to buy while you're there. If they're dropping it off in their garbage bin, a lock could be a good friend of theirs. There's been some other areas I know down in District 8. The same thing was happening and they put a lock on their garbage can so that that couldn't happen. There is, though, businesses can purchase bag tags. They can get them at any of our sites. They are in, they come in strips of 10 for $25 and they can have extra bags because the bylaw only allows that. Other areas around the province, garbage isn't even picked up at commercial places. So this is something extra that we do offer, but it is treated the same as every other Pid. There's only a certain amount of garbage that gets picked up at them. But there is the option that they could buy these extra bag tags. So that is, that is an option for them. But just to ensure we don't take black bags and garbage needs to be sorted. So it's an ongoing issue all around the province, the country. We, we know it, but this is a way that we've put in place a few years ago to try and help with that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. The IDS, prior to, prior to Canada Day, the, the IDS had a children's play day and barbecue at Freshwater Cove. Uh, I did not stop in. I am, although some people may think I'm not yet, still a child. Park and well was full and speaking to people who were there, they absolutely had a ball. They had swimming, they had lots of outdoor games for the kids. And again, a barbecue with refreshments for the kids and the adults. On July 5, they had the. on July 5th, they had the annual Doris Warren lobster supper, which sold out as it always does very, very quickly. Uh, I think it was two lobsters salad rolls for 25 bucks. So yeah, it, it disappears in a hurry. Uh, Canada Day celebrations, uh, the Celtic Lodge had a scavenger hunt. They had, and the scavenger hunt was across several locations. So you had a, your team had to have a means of transportation to, uh, participate, but it went very well. Uh, they also had, uh, refreshments there as well as a flag raising, uh, complete with our local RCMP members in their red surge. Uh, the, uh, Cape Smokey had, uh, their Rising Star competition again on Canada Day, which again went very well. Uh, basically a free concert for anybody who wanted to go and see these up and coming stars. Uh, and they also of course had the gondola rides. Um, Cape Red Highlands Golf Course had their, uh, annual Canada Day scramble. I'm not a golfer, but I try. Uh, the Inghamish Library will be having their grand opening on July 9th at 6:00 PM. They are, uh, we did stop in, uh, Warden Oregon, councillor Hennick and myself to see, uh, their new location. And they've done a very nice job. It's very well organized and looks great. I think it's going to be, uh, an asset to the community. And that is it for me.
Thank you, councillor Donovan. Councillor Hennick?
Warden, um, Canada Day was busy around District Eight with lots of activities from one end to the other. So that was from Base at Lawrence to Cape North to Dingwall. Uh, everybody seemed like they had a great day out with a hurdy breakfast at the, at the Bay Cafe, which kicked off the day and it ended, uh, from five to eight or nine down at the new Northern Waves Development Society down in Dingwall. So it was a very fun and nice days for everyone to get out. Uh, John Cabot Day was yesterday, July 6th with a, with exciting news coming out from the Cabot Society that they inquired the canning and sword that was given away many years ago. They're hoping with some testing, they are hoping that this could be a history changing moment for our area with more to follow. Once I get some more information on that. Um, it was a great day with over 250 in attendance. Um, from the reenactment to the barbecue to the beautiful cake that was made in John Cabot's face. It was chocolate and it was delicious from a lady in Cape Lemoyne that, that kooks to you. It was delicious. Uh, the only one little issue that would, that the society had was, um, they would love to see a proper stairway, uh, put going down to the beach there. Um, it, it's only like a, a wooden stairway with, with shingles on it. Uh, many people had problems going down on the beach yesterday, trying to get to the beach. And some of them with everybody, with the, they were even falling because there's no rails or nothing. It's just cut it down, right? So I wish we could do something, maybe, you know, I know it's a provincial beach, but I think it really needs to be looked at in, in my district. So, uh, I'll just put that out there for now. Um, Crab Derby and Crab Fest will be on July 20th at the Base at Lawrence, uh, Fire Hall. Uh, the Derby starts at eight and the crab and ham dinner starts at 12. That's usually a, a, a good one to go to if anyone wants to attend. Just go down to the Bay Wharf at around eight and any fishermen that they have designated boats, that'll take you out, uh, for the Derby. Um, August 2nd is the annual some, Summer Fest and Boat Parade. It's a fun day for all that's put on by the Base at Lawrence Community Center. Um, they do the boat parade at night, which is, they do different themes and a fun day for everyone to attend. Uh, also the North Highlands Northern Community Museum have a full schedule of events for July and August on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, check out their webpage for, for, uh, for updates on that. We just had a great presentation last Tuesday from Ken Donovan about the Mi'kmaq community and John Cabot. It was, it was very interesting. The American also has a busy event page with lots of musical talents this summer. Um, but I'm hoping that the road construction will be done soon. Uh, had a few complaints over the last week about waiting times coming at a dingwall. Um, they were waiting close to 45 minutes. That's a stop sign in the heat. It seemed like there was, the traffic was going on the main road very well, but coming up at a dingwall, they were stopped for long periods of time. Uh, one lady even had a medical emergency and she was telling the flagger and they, they still wouldn't stop the traffic and let her go. I did send off an email to, uh, Mr. McDonald. But like I said, hopefully, um, the wait will be, the construction will be over soon. Um, but it looks like everyone's having a vi- very busy tourist season so far, which is great for the area. And I also like to thank the grads of, uh, 2025 Cabot. I was there to give anniversary, uh, for the municipality and it was great to see so many, uh, young and happy graduates. There was 36 that graduated from Cabot this year, which was one of the biggest classes since, I think it's like 15 years or something. So kudos to you all for getting that far and, uh, reach for the moon. So that's it for me.
Councillor Hennick, councillor Matheson La Forte?
You, Warden? Um, there were several events around my district, but today I'm going to try to highlight something off the peninsula. Since I live on the peninsula, I'm pretty peninsula heavy with most of my updates. So for anyone who's not familiar, um, with some of the publications out of Wadmukook, I, they just released their fifth edition of their newsletter. So I'm going to read, just give you some of the highlights of events that have happened and are happening in the community of Wadmukook. So for starters, I want to mention the pop-up bike hub. It's a community do-it-yourself bike repair space. That's happening at the NSCC building, July 29th from 2:00 to 6:00 PM and July 30th. So what it involves, you come and get a 20-minute session to get your bike tuned up and learn some tips and tricks for safe riding. So that again, that's at the NSCC building. I would also love to mention the fact that they had last month, they had a very successful youth fishing derby, their very first one. So, uh, youth, family, community members, they all came out to support and, um, take part in the very first Wadmukook Fishing Derby. It was a day full of fun and laughter and competition and they had an amazing turnout. So they're all very happy with that. The next I'd like to talk about is the Mi'kmaq Summer Games. So they're called, there's a call out for volunteers for the 2025 Mi'kmaq Summer Games in Wadmukook. So they're getting ready to host the 2025 Summer Games in August. And they're looking for volunteers to make it a success. So they need volunteers to support all sports and events throughout the week, whether people in the community are experienced or not in the games. But they want to note there'll be no billiards, wrestling or swimming events this year. I did not find out why, but that's very specific. And so volunteering is a great way to be part of the action, meet people across Mi'kmaq and support their athletes. So that's taking place August 15th to the 24th. And they have a registration on their website. In conjunction with that, they're offering a food handlers course, uh, the week of July 13th. Because if you're interested in helping out during, and volunteering during the Summer Games, they're offering a food handle certification course in Wadmukook the week of July 13th. So anybody who wants to volunteer with food service, take your food service safety course. And the last thing that I will mention is they're having the 2025 Mi'kmaq World Waltz Championship. So communities across Nova Scotia will gather in Wadmukook for the 2025 Mi'kmaq World Waltz Championship. Don't forget to come cheer on. Lyndia Isadora representing Wadmukook in the championship on July 9th and 10th this week at the Wadmukook Culture and Heritage Centre. And that is my wrap-up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Warden McLeod?
If I can be signed to see, I do. Thank you. Anyway, um, yeah, I have, um, come to my attention, uh, this month about the ATVs, um, they're crossing around the roads. And, um, I was checking and researching some in another counties, they have some, um, they're allowed to do it. So, and these people was telling me, um, they hear about maybe the government right now, they're, they're very open to open some roads for ATVs. And I would like if a staff, uh, the CEO can refer some to the staff or search if the government, uh, the province is, um, is open to have a discussion about to open some roads for the ATVs. Because as you know, the only they can do is riding in the trails. And sometimes they need to cross or move, go to the trail. So I just wondered if we can search that. Uh, I, okay, I can make a motion if we can send a letter to the province to, um, to let us know if we can apply for some roads, open some roads for ATVs. Uh, for example, uh, the Mara Guard to, uh, open this year in July, the Mara Guard to Harvett Kings Trail. So they just announced that. Some, I don't know if Sydney, CBRM can give us some idea how they did. Um, I understand Richmond and Inverness have some roads. So if we can figure out that for.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or? Second by councillor Matheson La Forte? All in favor? Against? Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, just to let, uh, people know, uh, I probably Public Works is reported the highway, the overpass, uh, is reported is not done yet, but people is getting some, I'm getting some calls about that. So it's reported just for knowledge. And I would like to take from my district budget, a thousand dollars for Bedeck Nordic Club. I need a.
You need a motion for that?
I need a motion for, uh, take a thousand dollars for Bedeck Nordic.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second or? Second by councillor, all in favor?
Thank you. And can I just add the $600 to Bedeck Golf Society? I know it's not, need a motion, but I am here right now. Six hundred dollars, Bedeck, uh, Bedeck Golf Society. Please. And, um, and that's it. Um, I just wishing a happy summer and safety for the residents this summer. Thank you.
Deputy Warden, councillor.
Well, I passed mine in last week to Stephanie and I'm going to have to wing it next. No, that's fine. Anyway. Our potholes are still an issue here and DOT has been contacted again. But anyway, the boardwalk seems to be do- going well. Construction there is going at a great pace. It looks, they're great, they're making great strides, are they? Uh, I was fortunate enough, along with the councillor born, to go to our graduation. Plus I ended up going to the prom as well to the ceremony there. That's probably my second prom. But anyway, there, it was both wonderful events and we certainly wish the, the children well in their future endeavors. Canada Day was a, sort of major success here. We had more people, I think, in the village than I've ever seen before in my life. And as was mentioned, councillor born and councillor McLeod and MLA Timmins. We, uh, we were in the parade and did a lot of talking and handshaking or whatever you want to call it. We had a, we had a great day at it anyway. And I'd like to caution the residents of the village here. We have a lot of tourists in here now and a lot of them are like on a herd cats. They don't pay attention. They're, if you're driving through town, they're opening doors in front of you. They're jumping in front of you. So I just ask the residents to be patient and kind of watch out for them. Thank you.
You councillor. Okay, District Seven. I just want to mention the library opening that councillor Donovan, uh, hope everyone comes out to see the new space and enjoy a cup of tea and, uh, just, just check it out. It, it is a nice spot. Uh, paving District Seven and Eight is almost done. I know there's been some long delays, but when it's done, it'll be so nice. So just have a little bit more patience, uh, with it. Also, the bridge project at Hathaway Brook, uh, is almost completed. Uh, it's been a long process for that too. Um, I, I reported the two public works about the missing pavement at Castle Rock there, councillor Donovan, after I received a call about a incident with a motorcycle and a car there. Uh, also I was in contact with DNR or, uh, a coyote sighting numerous times in Niels Harbor, New Haven. And they're supposed to send someone out to, uh, look into this. Uh, if he has cited again, please call DNR or myself and I will get, get hold of them again. Uh, the Pink Delicious auction was held over the weekend and by the look of the bids, and there was 200, 200 plus, 250 items on it, on, for the auction. And I think it was, uh, a success. And that's all for District Seven there. Okay? Um, motions and solutions. Resol- resolution, sorry, solutions. Uh, I wish we had solutions for some things. Uh, basic income councillor Matheson La Forte?
Thank you, Warden. Well, I posted information on what this resolution was going to be about. But I think upon reflection with the, I didn't really get any questions or feedback. So what I'm thinking to be fair, because the time of year, and I did send everything out with only three days to read. Uh, I'm really passionate about this and I think I would like to set up a situation where everybody else might be as informed and/or passionate about it as I am. So I would like to, I think, table this. There's two things I'd like to do. I think I'd like to table it for the next session or after. But what I'd like to do, if it, if I think it would provide more clarity, if we invited in some of the people from basic income Nova Scotia, because they have gone to other municipalities and giving presentations. And I think just to be fair, based on the time of the year and the kind of, uh, put the pressure that I put on people to like, look at something. Not everybody's connected to their computer this time of the year. So I, I think I would like to do those things. So I will not be putting forth the resolution today. I will table it, but I'd like to invite people from basic income Nova Scotia to come give a presentation. And then after following that, I think then I'd like to put forth the resolution. So we're going to put a, a pin in that, I think, for today. Yes. Yes. And then we'll discuss it at a later date. Yes. Just because it's, it, it's too important just to like rush through at this moment. So, especially the time of the year. Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, so we'll table that then. Um, and now it's the CIO committee report.
Yeah, thanks. So, uh, for my report, so I, I want to thank, uh, staff. I was off last week and staff stepped in, um, to let me have a couple of days off. So thank you very much. Uh, so, um, in relation to ACAP, that was here at our last council session. We've reached out to Kathleen at ACAP for next steps for forming a committee. I think that council has reached out to, to see if there was interest in forming a subcommittee and seeing the areas of highest priority. And so we will be getting next steps to be setting up that committee. Um, related to the municipal planning standards and the land use bylaw, we have signed the documents and submitted them to the province. So we are waiting to hear back from the province on, um, their approval of that, which we're hoping is going to go quite smoothly. They've already had a pre-review of it. So, um, I'm expecting to hear back from them shortly on that. Uh, so we talked about CBU's ask and we're going to look into that. Uh, to let everyone know, the grant checks have been processed and they are being sent out along with a letter, um, of congratulations to everyone with their amounts that they've received. A notice that we'll be sending out with the water bills. So our water bills are in the process of being, uh, the meter reads are happening and the bills for the first quarter are going to be sent out. We're going to be sending a notice in the water bills also in regards to folks adding a W in front of their account number for online payments. Um, this is again, going to be a notice that's sent out in the water bills. Um, but the W helps us to make sure that the water payments go to water in our systems. So, um, if you're talking to your residents who are on a water system, maybe just remind them to update their, um, online processing so that they could add a W at the beginning of the account would be greatly appreciated. And, um, help with some, um, ticked off people possibly if their payment doesn't go to the right spot. So we ask for everyone's help on that. Uh, we are also preparing for our next tax sale. It's going to be in August and it will be a tender sale. Keep watching our website for, uh, notices of properties that are, will be going up. Our waste collection staff, uh, will be increasing curbside rejections due to high levels of contamination within garbage recycling and organics. Um, we have had a really good program we implemented early for recycling and for, um, the items that we try to keep out of our landfill. um the items that we try to keep out of our landfill. Um and it seems to be we need to get some more um education on how to keep reminding residents and businesses about how to uh sort. So we are in the process of looking at hiring a um dive divert coordinator. Um so that will be posted soon.
Can I ask you, would you notice if that is a lot of summer residents from other areas?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I'm sure that we can look into it. There's certain areas that are most areas around here are cottage country. Uh something we do see is some CBR residents that might come over and they leave black bags. We don't collect black bags. We haven't for years and years and years. And so we're just not going to. Um so I think people, there used to be a note on our, one of our communications um bulletin board. It said, know which county that you're in. Uh because we all have different rules. Um and again, based on uh receiving uh funding for uh I guess this isn't here, but uh we just heard on Friday, we did receive funding for the municipal innovation program, which is something the council made a motion for, where we're um looking at uh selling our our waste collection services to Inverness County. Uh so we did receive funding from the province for that. For um doing a study to see which, how to efficiently do that and how to efficient uh make our routes more efficient in what we're doing and how we can collect in other areas. So there's a really good funding piece that we received over two hundred thousand dollars in relation to that. So um we will be moving forward with that and we'll be bringing updates on that. So uh involved in that will also be um education. Um because Inverness collects their garbage very differently. They have different uh or different recycling bylaw. We are not gonna go back. We're gonna bring them up um to our levels. So we also need to be doing our own level of good um sorting as well. So that's some good news that we have received because that will be a money generator for us.
So if now we've uh right now we're collecting and people is putting in black bags and that you're rejecting right now until and give the information that this is the way you have to do it?
Yep, we leave an orange sticker on it and there's a tick box on the sticker. We don't, we don't collect them.
Okay, thanks.
Uh we've also been receiving complaints about rejected materials in shared garbage boxes. Um so just an FYI, if the garbage box does not indicate the civic number sharing the box, our staff have no way of knowing if the material is from one household or five or ten. Um so residents uh have to indicate on the box the number of households that are shared. Because we do have a collection limit on how many that we collect. So it just makes it easier for us to know that we're supposed to collect five times four of each if there's four different civic numbers on it. Uh so if if they wouldn't mind doing that, that'd be great. Uh also, if residents are using garbage boxes that are too deep for our staff to access all material, the staff will be unable to reach what's inside the box and it'll be left behind. So I think there's some boxes that might be like five feet. Our staff may have to climb in the box to get it and we don't want our staff getting hurt doing that. So if the box could be accessible and if you can't reach it yourself, our staff probably can't because they're 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 the same type of person that the person dropping it in there is. So um if if they could look at the size of their box um to make it a little bit easier, that'd be great. Uh we are also now tracking sharps that are being found in blue bags and organics. Sharps, which are hypodermic needles, have been increasingly present in recycling across the province. Divert Nova Scotia has asked that all site, asked all sites to track and report the number of sharps being improperly disposed of. Improper disposal of these needles puts our staff at risk and is a major concern. Um pharmacies have boxes for sharps, safe sharps. So we encourage anyone who is using um hypodermic needles to please reach out to a pharmacy to get a free box to put your sharps in. Uh and then they can be disposed back at the pharmacy. So please don't be putting our staff um at risk for um uh infection. It's great that residents are volunteering to pick up at the look offs along Kelly's Mountain. We um we highly thank them for that. Um they are putting the material in black bags though. So we just discussed that we're not, we don't pick up black bags. We don't accept black bags. Um. And also, if they could please let us know when the job is done, if it's done, if we could time it so that it's on the days that our staff are over in that area, that'd be greatly appreciated as well. So then it's not left. Uh we, in the summer, we work on a, it's kind of a skeleton crew. Our staff deserve vacation as well. Uh so on those days that we get over there, we certainly will pick it up. It's just that um we can't make an extra trip over there for days that we're not in that area. So if that could be arranged, that'd be great as well. Um so as part of our, so I'm gonna move on to tourism here now. Uh as part of our signage and wayfinding strategy project, Fathom Consulting will be hosting some stakeholder engagement sessions next week around the county, as well as having meetings and discussions with other groups and organizations affected by signage issues in Victoria County. So this is part of the first steps in gathering feedback and identifying continuous and common challenges that we have. Speaking with um councillor Hennec this morning about some issue, parking issues. And so uh we know that there's issues with signage. So we're trying to get um some help and a consultant to give us some uh tips and tricks so that we can and make wayfinding and signage easier for our residents and for our visitors. Also, in tourism, community development trails. Um so work is underway to design and build two new trailheads to assist with parking safety and trail accessibility. One will be at Hunter's Mountain and the next will be at the Oregon Road entrance uh to the Highlands Trail system. Um we did have an ask from a resident for the county to administer a road association. So this came from a private uh road uh where they are in the process of forming a road association. Um. They asked that the county take over the administration of the road administration, which means that we would collect a road levy on the tax bills from the residents that own the properties on that road. Um we would need to have a bylaw developed if this is something council is interested in. I've, we did something on roads, private roads, not that long ago, a council. Um I've also looked into what other areas have road associations. I think there's seven that are around the province that have a road association. What happens is the road association uh has to have their own bylaws. Um two thirds of the road, kinda like the, kinda like the local improvement charge. Um but it's administered by the the private owners on the road. Um and then the county would charge an administration cost on top of the fee. The fee gets added on to the residents within the, who are on the road where the road is affected. So that is something also that um I'd like to know if council, if that is something that is of interest for us to look into. Uh it was an ask from one uh private road. I think it was in District Two.
Motion to look into this.
I need a motion, I think, if council is interested in looking into this.
Councillor Born?
I I just have a few more questions. Um. You're, you you did share that other municipalities do this.
Yes, there's seven around the province.
That has this and they do administer the the tax.
The road levy.
The road levy?
Yes.
So in this situation, are they, are they saying that they want a certain amount of money? Or is it a percent of their tax? Or you don't know that yet, the details?
No, what I think that they are asking for is, I'm not sure if we would be the ones that would look into doing the work or if they do the work. I'm a, let's, let's propose that they arrange for someone to come in and grade the road. Then the bill gets sent to the county and then the county adds it on to the tax bill of the residents in that area along with a small administration fee for doing that. So I, what I'm determining is that some of the residents may not be as interested in doing it on their own. And so they're looking for a way to get all residents to to sign up for it.
So I guess that would be my next question is leading into would it be helpful if they, when they form this group, if they did a survey to come back with some results to us about how many people would be interested? And how many not, just so we get a little bit of an idea. My concern with this would be for the folks that don't wanna do it. There is gonna be a ta, a levy put on their tax bill. And if they choose not to pay it, we're getting into some negative PR and negative, you know, we we don't need these constituents calling the office complaining that they're not gonna pay that portion. And then I worry about if it's not paid after two years, you know, tax sales and everything else. So.
That's why it's administered through us. That's the reason I.
That's a little bit, a little bit of a concern for me.
Councillor.
Is it that everybody doesn't wanna opt in or people just, nobody wants to manage it?
I'm thinking that it might be the opting in piece. Now, I think we could ask this um this group to come forward and maybe talk to us about it. I don't wanna speak on their behalf, but my thought is um they seem to be able to form their bylaws and get a group together. Um so they they seem to be okay on the administration side of it. I think it's the collection side, possibly. Uh but I'm, I'm just speaking from what I gathered from the phone call. Thank you.
Best case scenario, everybody on the street wants it done. They're all willing to go forward and do that. What that may end up opening up is every private road in Victoria County may want the same thing.
Which. To be, they need to be agree, right?
And they, and that's the formation of the road association. Yes.
Deputy Warden?
Um uh just checking uh about the courtesy roads, Diane Timmons is talking about it in your report.
What's that? Sorry?
A courtesy roads that she's trying to discuss potential courtesy roads, Diane, the MLI.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah. Uh this association, these people is in that line. So it's in my district. So uh it's.
It's a, it's a different one.
Mercy River Eagle's Way. It's another one.
Yeah.
Okay, but because, yeah.
Yeah, so the, that, that's a whole other situation, I think, that the roads that um uh Emily Timmons is talking about are roads that used to be provincial roads and now uh they have declassed them from that. And so I think that they have at some point gone in and maybe plowed them. But now they're trying, the province is trying to change the way that they are administering their, or the courtesy that they've offered to them. So it it is different than those ones.
So uh back to the the discussion about this, the road association. Um nobody, if I understand, it's not like everybody have to be there. Is if the the road, they agree with do that uh commitment, they will do. It's part of one, you know, to help the people to 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 do something. We have this conversation in Cal about uh, you know, they can, we can administer the levy or give it a some, some help. It's not like uh everybody in the roads or everybody want it. It's not like I open a can of worms. It's just because they're asking for a solution. So it's not like I've got, we are, give it to everybody. They have to have an association. They have to be so a bylaw, a rules to be there. It's not like we're going to pay the road for them, correct?
No, but it it does sound very similar to the local improvement charge that we, that we had proposed. Um and so what I've researched into the road association uh bylaw is that, or the private road bylaws in relation to a road association is that it's if two thirds of the road agree to whatever type of work it is that they're looking for, then it gets passed on to all residents.
Okay, so if you would like, if we don't have all that information, maybe bring it to us and this uh does this uh people is want to speak to council and and make the case there.
Okay, I can certainly ask them if they would like to do that. I actually thought they were gonna be here. Okay, okay. If that's, if that's council's wishes.
Yeah, I need more information.
Okay.
I think we're opening a real can of worms with this.
I need to fix.
I think. No, I think when we get.
Can I, can I?
Roads.
Before you continue, can I ask before you speak to, so you're not talking over one another? Um. We'll have to get more information before we decide. I I understand councillor. I think it could be too, but I think it could be good that it could help the rest of the the county too. So we'll have to get more information before we go forward on this. Okay. Would you like to say anything else?
Councillor, so I will ask uh the representative uh to see if they would like to come to council and then I will also do up a report similar to the one that we've already done, but um it's particularly on a road, private low road levy. Okay. Uh thank, okay. Uh so also, I'm sure you've all received a letter from Digby County uh re the road budget. I think everyone's received that. No? Okay, so uh Digby County sent out a letter uh to the province on road conditions, provincial road conditions. Um as you all know that that's a topic that comes up. We just took it off of our agenda, I think, last year because it's not our responsibility, but wondering if it's something that um I can send the letter out to council, but um I think they're looking for councils to get behind this, to send out a similar letter to the province to recommend putting more money into the budget for provincial roads. Okay, so uh sorry, I thought that you all uh had received that letter. I will send that out. Um and we can maybe bring it up at the next council session. That's good. Okay, uh so a little bit on the wastewater treatment plant update. Uh so we've placed an order on a new Terra Embier module. Uh the plant is set to arrive September-ish. It's in, it's in inventory, so it needs to get here. It's modular system, so there's less constructing of it, uh which we think is a good thing. Uh we're focusing first on the large development area and then expanding uh it out throughout uh the community. Uh also, so that's enough, the update that I have on on the sewer treatment plant. We had a meet councillor, sorry, uh Warden, Oregon and I had a meeting with uh Wagmacook with the chief and with their CEO. The chief requested a letter actually be sent to him to keep him up to date on the progress of the construction of the system. He was very excited about it. Uh in relation to the wastewater treatment plant, he said it's good for the environment. He said we're behind this. Um he wanted this letter so he has info for when he attends the Atlantic First Nations meetings. Um if it was to be discussed, he wanted to be, he wanted to be armed with all the information that he could have. So we're gonna be um sending uh regular letters and updates to um Chief Norman. So we sent the letter off to him. Uh and they are also interested in having a joint council session with council in the future. So hoping you're all um up for that and we will arrange that with Wagmacook. Yes. Should we make a motion to have uh invite them?
Um I'd like to make a motion that at a future date, we, this council gets together with the Wadma Cook council to have a meeting.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second, councillor Born?
Oh, sorry. Uh I'm, I'd like to make a motion that at a future date, the eight members of Victoria County Council get together with the council for Wadma Cook.
Councillor Born seconded? No, councillor Born seconded. Is there a discussion? Okay, all in favor? Against, motion carried. Um we discussed that we might have, we'll have one here and then we go to Wagmacook to see how different councils work. That is everything that I have.
Warden, go ahead. Uh just one question regarding the uh land use bylaw. It's gone to the province for their approval. Uh if they approve it, is that when it becomes effective? If they approve it, is that when it becomes effective? So we'll, we'll get a, they, they either approve or disapprove, they may want changes. But when the province finally gives it to go ahead, that's the date it will become effective in.
Correct, yeah. So there's no, no planning in place now, except for in the village until the province signs off on it.
Correspondence?
All correspondence except the Digby letter, which I thought had gone out to all council. But everything that we have done or that we've received has gone out to council.
Councillor.
Can we discuss one of the pieces of correspondence? I noticed that someone had, was talking about the fact that we don't have a, a mobile vending bylaw. I'm just wondering if there was any talk about ever creating a mobile vending bylaw.
So currently, we do have a peddler's bylaw, which has not been repealed yet. So Steph may wanna speak on this one. Everyone at home can hear you too?
Hi, sorry. Yes, so back in May, I believe you guys repealed or you did the first reading to repeal our peddlers, hawkers vending bylaw. So that is still in effect because we haven't done second reading yet. We haven't done second reading yet because we're still researching what the most appropriate vending bylaws would be to give to council to see what kind of vending bylaw you want. That bylaw was from nineteen eighty-two, so it certainly has to be updated. So yeah, we're, I'll come to council probably next month with a vending bylaw, a draft of one.
Okay, thank you. I just noticed because Inverness has a great one and it's pretty new.
So in relation to the one that is currently in place, the peddler's bylaw, there are exceptions to it. So there's, there are businesses that are exempt from a peddler bylaw, having to pay a peddler fee.
Yeah, correct. So anything sold from the land or the sea is allowed, is permitted without a permit or a license from the county. So I know that is, that is an issue. Food trucks, that is the most recent issue, so even with our current nineteen eighty-two bylaw, they still would be exempt. And, and the, the bylaw wouldn't pertain to them right now.
And then, sorry, go ahead.
I, I had thought of it too because I saw a posting in Inverness County this week of a certain food truck that couldn't go to a spot and they were upset about it and they were like, because of the bylaws in Inverness, and I thought made me think about it again, so thank you.
Yeah, like it ranges all throughout the province really, from the research I've been doing, I've looked at every county and it's either like a free for all or it's really buckled down and strict. The cost of permits range from fifty dollars to over two thousand dollars, depending on where it's at. So we're just trying to narrow down what the best options are to present to council and see kind of what you guys want to do for Victoria County.
But before we get to that, we did have a committee of the whole where we discussed the bylaws and policies that council wanted to have in place or wanted to work on. And that was not one the council requested. So I think before we put much work into it, we need to know if council is interested in that one because we're working on some other ones before that.
To be truthful, it was a bit of an out of sight, out of mind thing with me. I don't think about it until this time of the year when it seems prevalent and then you're thinking, okay, there's food trucks everywhere and there's issues with them, so. Yeah, that's why.
What is it, the wishes of council that we look into this before Steph come has to big it all up and then we don't use it? Deputy Warden?
It's just, it's an issue, like really we have an issue about that. Like we, I understand we have in the county, we have a date with all the vending, all the food trucks around, right, the festival, so. So the food truck rally brings people, brings economy. I under, do we have to do a bylaw for that? Is because what is the issue? Is just here or is around all the districts? Or because really, I don't know, it's, it's, if I want to take a decision, I have to take it to my residents.
Donovan?
Well, I think, and, and this is, I guess specifically around food trucks. If I own a brick and mortar restaurant and I'm paying taxes and I'm doing everything I'm supposed to do and a food truck pulls across the street and takes away half my business, I'm gonna be upset.
Yeah, but that's competition and bring competition, bring economy into your county. So the, the competition's in the summer, right?
Oh, I, no, I agree.
In the winter, I don't think the people get, get upset when the food trucks in the winter, right? Because everything is closed. So it's a double standard there for me.
Council Math, some before?
And I think that's what bylaws are intended to level out. So if they have permit prices that can offset the fact that they're not paying property taxes, I think that's what, because I, I think that's the major contentious issue, exactly what you said.
Yeah.
I'm paying property taxes for my business versus a mobile business, so yes.
Just checked with M J, right? Because I think we have an issue years ago. So I think they brought something about the M J, the M J that is not allowed to do that, so they have to be very careful about, you can charge that.
Councillor Donovan?
Thank you. Yeah, there should be permits in place if you're, or a permit fee, if you wanna operate a food truck. Especially in an area where there are brick and mortar restaurants.
So once again, okay.
Okay, I'd like to apologize for the fact that we didn't discuss this before when we were discussing the bylaws, I'll put that out there. I personally think it's something we need to look into and then it's not just because any of the correspondence came in, it's just that I'm realizing since moving back to Canada post-COVID, a lot of businesses are mobile businesses now compared to mobile vendors compared to like brick and mortar restaurants. There's more of them because of the economy, I noticed, so I think it's something that we definitely need to look into bylaw wise.
Councillor.
I agree with councillor Donovan on this particular issue. I think we do need to get the information back and then make a an informed decision on where we go with this.
Once again, is wishes of council to have Steph look into this. I need a motion for, can I get a motion? It's moved by councillor Donovan, second by councillor Hennick, that Steph, you will look into the vendors' peddlers bylaw for for us for future and then bring it back to, to the council. Will do. So we have motions on the table, we have a seconder, all in favor?
Yes, question, it's just recommendations, correct?
Yes. And then we'll vote on it at the next council after we get recommendations. Okay, all in favor? Hence, motion carried. Thank you, Steph. Before we go into camera, anybody in the gallery have a question, a comment? Oh, they might have a question. Okay, since there's none, we're gonna go into camera, so for, we need a motion to go into camera for a personnel issue. It's moved by councillor Donovan and second by councillor Born. All in favor? Motion carried, so. Yep.